Have a couple of minutes. There are agendas in the back and sign up as well. Ladies and gentlemen, we'll go ahead and call the March 11th Planning Commission Meeting to Order. First order of business is to determine a quorum. We do have a quorum with two commissioners absent. Review of the minutes. We've all had an opportunity to review the minutes from last month. Does anybody have a motion to approve?
I move to approve the minutes as submitted.
Second.
All right. Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? The ayes have it. Rezoning request number 824. Property owner Aaron Whitney. Applicant Aaron Whitney. Location, Jordan Simmons Drive. Request zoning change from R1M, single-family residential, to R4 multifamily. Total of 1.01 acres. Mr. Davis?
Yes, if you look on your screen, you'll see the subject property there. That's about the one acre there. I will go over to the GIS so you can see it on the aerial now. So this is the subject property right here, kind of at the end of Jordan Simmons Road. This was, this was one of the parcels. That was a part of the countywide R4 rezoning exercise where it went from R4 to R1M as well as all of the surrounding parcels. The applicant is requested to rezone it back to R4. I believe the applicant is here to discuss or answer any questions that you all might have in that regards. You know, we've had a few of these since the exercises occurred. And from the, from the reasons why staff would have recommended R1M at that time, nothing has changed. The area is still the same and, you know, the roads and how they work and you can see the existing lot pattern out there. I mean, that's one acre. You can kind of scale it. That's pretty much more of a larger lot pattern settlement. R1M had some zoning out there and we kind of matched that. I will say to the commission as a part of it and maybe just to kind of put this in your mind as this is that this R1M parcel, as long as it was located properly on the parcel, would allow for an accessory dwelling unit considering the size of the land. But the request to go to R4, staff recommends denial.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Commissioners, any questions for staff before we turn it over to the applicant?
Is there a structure on the property?
Yes, sir. There is an existing single-family home on it. I'll zoom in on it right there. There's your structure right there. And then I'll go to a street view, kind of see the land. This is the road that serves all of those lots down there. Very narrow, almost kind of like a crush and run. It's county maintained, but kind of a, not, not quite what we would consider a road to serve multifamily development.
So it's not paved. It's like crushed stone?
Yeah. I mean, it's kind of hard to tell in that, but it, it kind of comes down and, and you can kind of see as we kind of go down it, maybe in the sun, you can start to see it a little bit better there. Maybe.
Mr. Davis, is there any, any multifamily next to the property or right around it?
No, this is the zoning map here. As a part of that, you can see all of that stuff was rezoned back to the R1M.
Thank you.
Any, any other questions for Mr. Davis? Did we hear the applicant is here today? Would you like to come forward, please? Give us your name and address.
My name is Aaron Whitney. The property address is 145 Jordan Simmons Drive. I live in 1940 Gracewood Drive, West Ashley. And I do want to correct some, excuse me, I do want to correct some of the things that were, were said. That is a paved road all the way up to my home on 145 Jordan Simmons. Yes. See, all the way to that tree is where it's paved. The rock is not paved as you go right, and that's not my property. My property is on the left. And there are duplexes on Jordan Simmons Road. As soon as you, so if you continue around the corner on, on Jordan Simmons Road, my uncle Sammy Glover, he's owned duplexes since I moved there in, in 1989. My, my cousins, my first cousins lived in those duplexes and they actually, the family I'm talking to, my first cousin and my aunt actually moved into our home about 30 years ago, which is when this property began a duplex. This is almost a 4,000 square foot home with six bedrooms, four baths, and two kitchens. This, we operated as a home, as a, like a duplex informally because family lived in and out of the home. I had cousins. I had, you know, relatives. I had uncles. I had all of those people moving in and out of home for 30 years. We just never, it was always zoned as multifamily until September 17th, when I got the letter, and on October 8th was the first hearing. And I actually spoke to zoning and we actually decided to do some major renovations to the home. And we started working with the architect and we was told that the last hearing wouldn't be until February. And as long as we got our plans in before then, then it would, we would be grandfathered in. But I think in December was when the last hearing was, was read, and we did not get our plans in before then. And so that's, you know, beginning, earlier this year is when I started the rezoning.
Let me open this for questions from commissioners. Commissioners, any questions for the applicant?
Yeah. Mr. Whitney, what, what do you plan to do with the property?
So if, and I actually have plans that I submitted, right? What I want to do with the property, and I can, I can show you if you would like.
I, I can hear you. You can just.
All right. So essentially where we had it naturally separated for, for, you know, 30 some odd years, I just want to put a firewall right, right where we separated the properties. One kitchen is on the other side. The other kitchen is on, is on the other side. I just want it legal.
You, you want it to be a duplex?
I want it to be a duplex.
Okay.
And really what we're talking about now is just having the downstairs part be a mother-in-law suite so that my 74-year-old mother can come. You can have two different meters and she can be right there. We moved to West Ashley in 20, in 2012 to go to a public Montessori school for our kids. They're out of Montessori school now. We're looking to come back home and we want to do this legally and actually have family to be able to share this home like it's been shared for 30 years. I do commend you guys for changing that area from single-family to R4 because we had some major developments come in and overdeveloped our community. My great-great-great-grandfather actually bought this property and that's how my mother bought for my grandfather in 1982 for $2,100.
Let me, let me ask, let me ask Mark a question.
Thank you, Mr. Whitney.
Not sure if this will work. Could there be a zero lot line down that firewall and make it, he's got a pretty big lot there. Make it two lots or something like a, like a, something along those lines or?
No, because, I mean, so to kind of speak to some of these things and, you know, not to go into that is that, so what, what we're talking about is we're talking about existing grandfathered things. So the home and the use of it and any other stuff out there that's been there for a while, any other use would just be grandfathered. What the applicant's talking about doing is, is he's trying to go from a grandfathered situation and be able to get permits to actually create and do a firewall so you then have official duplex where you have two single units. Whereas now it's just a single-family unit with maybe how it was used over the years by a family, which is very common. But if you were to do that and run a property down the middle of it, it would basically, at that point in time, be an attached structure and would require that type of zoning, which R4 would allow.
Is there anything in the middle, like a R, R2 or something, anything that would accommodate what he's trying to do that you can think of?
Like I said, R1, R1 would allow for an accessory dwelling unit. A separate house, a separate accessory dwelling unit on the property.
Not attached.
Not attached. For another living quarters in, on the property.
On the basis of the fact that they've been living as multiple units in that structure, can't we grandfather it because of what they've been doing?
Well, that use is grandfathered. Nobody, I don't believe anybody's coming out there and telling you not to use the property in that manner. I think it's because he's applying for permits to do something. Yeah. So he's applying for permits to change that grandfathered.
And putting, putting in a firewall.
Right.
Is going to create that much of an issue.
That's my understanding of it from the building code because at that point in time, the firewall then basically makes it two separate units.
Which is how it was operated, right, for 30 years.
Commissioner Judy, you look like you have a question, sir.
Did, did anybody speak against this rezoning request?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chair, the zoning request is hard because there's nothing, I mean, there, it was multifamily.
Right.
And now it's all gone. And if he drops multifamily back in the middle, it just, it's just, I mean, I don't, I understand staff's position, but I'm just trying to figure out how to get him what he wants and not, you know, have the neighborhood.
I appreciate that, Commissioner. A question I would have is what, what are the restrictions that could be placed if you were to allow him to return to the R4 for this specific work? Are there other restrictions that could be applied to limit future development in, no?
No, you do a rezoning of this R4 and if you justify R4 as an appropriate area here, any application for any properties around it, you would have to use the same logic. Support R4 zoning on those. And then the ability R4 would allow for any R4 permitted use. Our zoning would not, we would not do a condition on it. So if they wanted to come in and do a small apartment building there in the future and tear the house down or put townhomes in there, the zoning would allow it.
And with all due respect, sir, there are duplexes on, on Jordan Simmons, I'm sorry, on Jordan Simmons Road, there are duplexes on the same road. I can throw a rock and there are a series of six duplexes on a fraction of the lot.
I understand. And I recognize that while that is an existing grandfathered condition, if they were to get a permit, then they would have challenges as well.
Right. Like that wouldn't be able to get reestablished today. So it would be a grandfathered use and it continued to be used in that manner.
And with all due respect, because I just, I just want to have reasonable consideration. My mother built this property. She bought this property in 1982. My mother died in 1970, in 1997. I will not tear down her house to put up any other, these other properties that were overdeveloped in my neighborhood. I will not do that because I care about the character of my home. My grandfather lived across the street from this home. My aunts, my cousins, this is family.
Mr. Whitney, I, I think we understand. We certainly understand that it's a difficult situation, very unique. Okay.
One other question of staff. We do not have a duplex zoning that might, could fit here.
Well, the next zoning that would come into play under R4 would be R3. So R3 would allow for townhomes, duplexes. It just would remove the multifamily component.
And that is fine. That is perfectly fine. A townhome, a duplex, that's, that's what I want to do. So I don't mind changing the, when I called, I was, I was told that, you know, well, my understanding was to go back to the zoning.
Mr. Whitney, I think we're, we're tracking.
Right.
I think we're tracking, so hold on, hold on just a moment. Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Whitney?
I have one.
Yes, sir.
Well, actually more for staff. Is the whole issue that he is putting on a firewall the problem?
I think.
Do you understand it?
Yeah. So I think it, you can explain to them that you, you submitted to look, you worked with the Building Services Department to get permits to put a firewall in, to make it an official attached unit, a true duplex versus its condition it's in now. And then that's where it kind of, you kind of got caught up.
Well, I didn't put in any permits yet.
Where you've called, requiring about that.
Called, trying to figure out everything that I need to do. I was told that I could proceed back in October. But in, in, in December is when I found out that it had already changed. And now I had to go through this, this process right here. And I'm, 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 I'm just flabbergasted that this was not recommended by staff, particularly with the reception I got and the cooperation I got from staff as I presented what I wanted to do. So excuse me if I'm, I'm just kind of rattled.
No, Mr. Whitney, we appreciate you following the process properly.
I'd like to follow up on my question of staff.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
If the, if, if that is the problem, what if he put a door, a passage from one side to the other? I recognize that this grates the firewall. But it could be lockable on both sides and then this whole thing would be moot, right?
I mean, is your question if he just put a door between the two units today?
Build a door, some kind of a passage or something.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't, I mean, that's a building code thing, but I, I think they're trying to go past. I think they're trying to achieve more than that.
Yes, sir. We are, we, we would like separate units. We would like, we would like separate meters, right? Because that's been a big challenge over the years, you know, where you have one meter and now you got to supply electricity and it's a nightmare. And so we wanted to separate this the way it should be, put a proper firewall. So we increased the safety of this property, having all these, you know, two families living there. It's the right thing to do. Plus economically, this will help us out as well with having two separate meters, being able to separate the bills appropriately. And I don't understand how it's not reasonable. And R3 sounds like that would work.
Thank you, Mr. Whitney. Any other questions, Commissioners, for Mr. Whitney?
I have one question. Would, would the planning staff be willing to zone at R3 in that location?
I don't believe our recommendation would change just, you know, and all, and I can appreciate the applicant situation, but R3, it would, would be similar to R4, just not quite as intense. You know, that particular area, the general road, you know, if you start saying that a particular zoning is appropriate for a certain area, then you have to be able to justify every single one of those parcels. If they want to come in and ask for that same thing, you would have to grant that rezoning as well.
I think we, I think we do that all the time.
Right. With all due respect, I, I've spoke to all of my surrounding neighbors. They happen to be my relatives. Everybody is on board.
All right. Any, anything else for Mr. Whitney? All right. Thank you, Mr. Whitney.
Thank you very much.
Do we have anybody from the public who would like to speak for or against this? No? Hearing none. Commissioners?
Actually, I would like to speak for.
Yes, ma'am.
I don't know him or anything about his property.
Please state your name and your address for the record.
My name is Charlotte Shepherd and my physical address is 422 Embassy Drive. And I also happen to have a piece of property that I'm going to deal with grandfather issues with. And I think it would do us well as a community to look at some of these individual cases that are going to come up. When we're dealing with long-term residents that we've had here for years, who are trying to do the right thing. I mean, they, you know, based on where they're at, they could have backed door to everybody and just went and built a firewall. I think they just want to, they want to be doing it right. I think we should work with them.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Charlotte. One of the things is that, when's the big part is that our, our building official, when they come to request meters and power, that's a big part of it. And the county would not give them a separate power meter in those situations because that's a big kicker. That's what kicks in new things.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioners?
Mr. Chair, I, I think we need a new zoning class because I'm hearing there are duplexes down that street that were okay under R4, but then here came the apartment guys. And of course, the reaction was go to R1, which prevents the apartments, but it also hurts people that have duplexes in place. So maybe, maybe a new zoning class for duplexes would help solve some of that. That would take, I don't know if it's more than a text amendment and some study, but maybe we could look into that. And maybe not only help this gentleman, but others with duplexes.
Thank you, Commissioner Pratt. Other commissioners? Do we have a motion?
I have one question. If, if he were to take this to the Board of Zoning Appeals, would the Planning Commission take a position on it or not?
The Planning, I know, the Planning Commission would have no authority over the BZA's decision matters.
Okay.
If that's your question, like whatever you all have, they are their own body and that would be a separate way of going about trying to gain some type of approval. But if the county, to Mr. Pratt's point, thought that going in that direction would be the way, that would be better than taking matters to the BZA. You want to, you want to solve the problem. You don't want to put a Band-Aid on it. The BZA, when things like this, these are things that would not be recommended because that would then be, you get into use variances and that's not what the BZA should be doing. The BZA is looking at providing to relief on things that are allowed. You're ju, you might be reducing a setback or you might be reducing this. It's not, it's not allowing a use that's not allowed.
Recognizing this unique case and the point you just made, Mr. Davis, about not putting a Band-Aid on it, would this be a situation where we would ask the applicant to work with staff on one of those solutions for next month?
What? Solution of what? A whole new zoning classification?
Or a text amendment that would allow for certain cases?
It would take a lot longer than a month. That would, we would, if we were going to do where Mr. Pratt was kind of going, staff would have to look at zoning classifications. We'd have to look at where duplexes could be allowed within existing zoning. Right now we have R1, R2, R3, R4. R1 is single-family detached. R2 is single-family detached. And then when we get into R3 and R4 is when we start bringing in the attached the attached products. So within R3, you, you're pulling in townhomes, duplexes. And then R4, we introduce the multifamily apartment component. So there, you have R1, R2, then it jumps right into that. There's nothing that would simply just allow duplexes and single-family. So that would require a, a serious evaluation of the zoning code and how to fit something in there. And that just does not happen in one month.
Commissioners?
I mean, just in a general, just to do that, it would require a while and then to work towards it. And then that would go with you all and it'd have to go to county council and, you know, it would have to be fully vetted to a very high level.
I'm kind of seeing this like we had light industrial and then we had light industrial 2. We had to come up with something which did not allow outside storage. So we came up with LI 2, maybe similar to that, but maybe not exactly. But it, it's going to take something along those lines, I think. We're going to be back here with somebody else later with a duplex, I think, you know.
My understanding is that Paula Simmons on, on my role, she was one of the people who asked for an exception. She was one of the people who asked for an exception. She was granted an exception prior to it being rezoned, rezoned. All I'm asking, and, and the reason why this, this whole commission is here is so that their discretion for situations, particularly with this, right? Me nor my family, we're not developers. We're not looking to exploit.
I think we're tracking with you, Mr. Whitney. Thank you, sir. Ms. Kira, since you're in the audience, would you give us some guidance from your perspective, please?
Yes, I, I would like to give one alternative scenario. I know I've heard you all discussing and, and the Board of Zoning Appeals has come up. And one of the other functions of the Board of Zoning Appeals is to hear cases of appeals of a zoning administrator decision. So another possibility that the applicant could explore is filing for an official determination. This isn't something that I have made on this request yet as to whether this is a change in use. But if the applicant makes that request, I make a determine, does this in fact change the use on the property? And then the Board of Zoning Appeals has the opportunity to weigh in. And instead of having to go through a rezoning and look at an R3 or an R4 in the middle of an R1, it, it's another alternative route. Or instead of having to go in and amend the zoning code for, you know, this one-off, you know, grandfather, it's a possible opportunity to have the Board of Zoning Appeals weigh in on whether or not this does in fact qualifies a change in use.
Okay. Commissioners?
What will we do? We would table and you would take it from here?
You would table and have the applicant request a zoning administrator determination on whether this in fact changes the use on the property.
Got you. Questions for Ms. Kira? Okay. Thank you. Gentlemen?
I move that we table the proposed zoning and that it be referred to the zoning administrator and the zoning board of appeals for determination.
Okay. Do we have a motion on the floor? We have seconds?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. So get the zoning administrator determination. And we, we would like for you guys to help with that and make sure we get that taken care of. Thank you.
Thank you very much, gentlemen.
All right. Subdivision applications and requests. We have no final plots. We have preliminary plot. The Tucker Tract Cluster Subdivision, property owner DeVoro Homes, applicant civil site environmental, location Highway 61. Zoning District R1, single-family residential, 156 lots on 97.24 acres. Mr. Davis?
Yeah, I'm going to start first with the general location. If you all recall back, this is pretty much where Summer's Corner is. We have the industrial park right here. The subject parcel is right here. And we had this not too long ago come before you. Well, since then, the applicant has been working towards their entitlements. They have decided to utilize the cluster subdivision. So again, this is the parcel right here. And I'm going to go to the plan itself. So this is the plat that you all will be approving through here. There's kind of an overview of it. But I'm going to pull up the pretty picture of it because I want you all to kind of see. So within R1, they optioned to utilize the cluster subdivision. So this will be the second one of these that you've seen since we've adopted that. The first one was within an R2 area there off of Mentor Road. This is an R1 cluster. And this here is the cluster plan that was approved at a staff level. Again, you all will be approving the full preliminary plan, construction drawings. That will allow them to then start construction of developing this site. And then later they would come back for a final plat and then you all would then approve that. But I would like to talk about some of the things that this particular one does because I think now that the cluster, you know, is in and you all are kind of, kind of learning about it. Basically, it's a trade-off of smaller lots for more open space. But every time one of these comes. But every time one of these comes, there's kind of like an à la carte bonus density component, and I like to point out some of the features that are used as a part of that to enhance better land development design of what this was trying to achieve. Within this particular one, so it's two sheets. This is the front of that parcel, and then it goes towards the back. This is like a little bit of a back area here, and then there's a nice little kind of high ground. This is going to be a really nice community open space park back here that kind of runs right off the wetlands back here that will be allowed and open for all of the HOA to enjoy. Within this one, they opted to utilize building a eight-foot-wide paved multi-use path along the frontage here. That will ultimately, one day, if, you know, the first one just kind of seems, I always say it's, you know, it's the first adult tooth. It might look out of place at first, but eventually all the teeth grow in and everything kind of comes in. They also decided to utilize a no cul-de-sac design, which helps in design as well as dead-end utilities. I know water and sewers providers like it when we don't do cul-de-sacs. And they also utilized a pedestrian pathway within their pass of open space, which is this rear portion here to kind of come back and allow them to come back through there. Outside of that, we also have a lot of little pocket parks and active use spaces as you can see through here and pathways throughout the community. The applicant is still working to finalize their DOT encroachment permit. So here is the actual where the road will be coming in, which is right about here on that property, right about in here. So the applicant is here, the engineer's here to answer any questions that you might have about the specifics of the site and the engineering of the site. Staff recommends approval conditional on receiving final public works approval.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Any questions for Mr. Davis before we bring up the applicant?
What public works approvals are needed? Is it sewer or is it water? Is it both?
Oh, yeah. This will require water. This, a subdivision like this, when they go to lots, requires water and sewer. And a member of actually the water and sewer department is here if you have any questions for them on that type of stuff. They, they, we, we talked to them about this and they fully support this coming here and this approval here tonight.
My question was oriented towards, is the infrastructure available to support it?
Yep. And a member of the water and sewer department is here if you have any direct questions related to the water. And so there is a force main along Highway 61. This, well, let's go to that. Let me show you some of those sheets. So there's going to be a pump station right here, and I think you'll, you'll appreciate this as we have it. So right here is the pump station on the site, but as a part of this, you can obviously see there were some adjacent vacant parcels there. So one of the things that I think that we all appreciate is we don't want a bunch of pump stations everywhere. So as a part of this, there's an easement that connects to this parcel, and then this right here is an easement that connects to the adjacent parcel that will be able to tie into this pump station for any future development to kind of minimize these things, trying to kind of forward plan that stuff. And that was done as a part of this development.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Davis? Okay. The applicant, is the applicant here and would like to speak?
I'm David Stevens at Civil Site and Environment, and Ron Brown is the project engineer on this. I'll let Brian, Ryan tell you exactly where we are with the DHEC per, not a DHEC permit, a DOT permit and go from there. And that's pretty much all we have left to do. We're working with Jason and those on a cost scan agreement because they wanted to upsize the water line, and we ended up following details of, they get, we have water and sewer available to us. We got to extend the water line, but other than that, we're moving along really good. Ryan?
Ryan Brown. I know we have a conditional public works approval. The only thing, we've addressed all of their comments as far as the site is concerned. We are waiting on two items, which is the SC DOT encroachment permit and the DHEC land disturbance permit. We've addressed every comment with the DOT currently. They're waiting on the South Carolina land disturbance permit. We have that in process. We don't expect any comments from them at this time with their review. Once we obtain that, which will probably be in the next two weeks, give or take, sort of a domino from there, we'll get the DOT, or we get the DHEC permit. DOT will approve. We'll submit both of those to public works or they're final approved.
Thank you.
If you have a jurisdictional wetland there and a path through the wetland, is that into the covenants?
Yes, it's already permitted and into the covenants.
Okay.
And those have already been recorded and...
And the real reason we don't have the DOT permit is the new bonding requirements. You have, you have to bond it, and it, we, the bond has been sent to them. We have not heard anything back from them. It meets their requirements. It's just process.
Okay.
Okay.
Commissioners, any other questions for the applicants? All right. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Anyone from the public that is present that wants to speak about this plat? No? All right. Commissioners?
I like, I like the fact they got a lot of open space in the back. Looks like about half the property is going to be a, a park of some sort or something, so that's pretty neat.
I agree with you. The cluster ordinance was, I think, a good, good move. Does anybody have a motion?
I moved to approve.
All right. Conditional pending public works approval?
As, as proposed by the...
All right. Very good. Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay. Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. No street name requests, but we do have some old business. Rezoning request number 822, property owner McClendon Family LP, number one, applicant James H. McClendon and Bob White Ridge LLC. Location Indigo Drive in Ridgeville, South Carolinian. Rezoning change from AC to R1. Total acres of 445 acres. Mr. Davis?
So this was before you all last month, and this was during kind of our virtual meeting, and that was an exercise in itself. This item was tabled by the Planning Commission, and now it is back to this month. The applicant, I believe, is here to speak as well as any representatives, and I believe some engineers. I thought I saw, yep, I see engineers here today, and I think some of your concerns were on tabling it as having it further studied, and staff received an email representing the applicant that they would like this item to be placed back on this month's agenda. So that's how it ends up on old business. Staff's, you know, staff report is the same. Our recommendation does not change. We recommend it to deny it.
All right. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Davis before we have the applicant come up? No? Would the applicant like to come forward? Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is James McClendon. I live at 604 Sagebrush Road, Smokes, which is in Colton County. This is my first, I'm going to have to rely on y'all to kind of direct me, but basically I wanted to be here, like to tell you my representation, my thoughts about this property and what I'd like to do with it. It's, if, if, it's ready, if you're ready for me to go ahead and speak...
Go right ahead, sir.
...give you my position. First of all, this particular property was purchased by my grandfather in 1949. He was a dairy farmer, had a farm on the other side of Ridgeville, and he had purchased this property both for, he had planted some corn on there to use for silage for his cattle. He also, at one time, my first memory of this was probably, I'm going to say, early to mid 1950s. I used to ride over there with my grandfather in his old pickup truck, and we'd ride out into the middle of what we then called the 100-acre field. He would blow his horn, cows would come out from the woods and they'd gather. He'd throw some hay out to them. I didn't understand what all this was about at the time, but later on, I decided that basically what he was doing was checking the health of the herd, the, probably counting the number of cows he had out there, but he used it mainly as a growing area. He would put weaned calves out there and they would stay out there until they got old enough to breed, and then he would bring them over to his dairy and they would join the milking herd. I have a lot of fond memories of my grandfather over there. He was the most significant man in my life when I was growing up, and this has always been a special place for me. My grandfather passed away in 1961, so we're talking about a long time ago. He left this property to my mother. My mother, about a little over 20 years ago, put this in a limited, family limited partnership of which I was a partner, she was the other partner. She passed away about three years ago, and then it's been in my name since under the Bob White Ridge LLC name. I had always anticipated leaving this property to my son. Have one son. He lives in Knoxville, Tennessee. We had never really talked a lot about it, but approximately, I'm going to say a couple of years ago, he advised me that he expects Knoxville to be his permanent home. He has family up there, two young boys, and he told me he didn't have an interest in inheriting this property. And although I had never thought before about selling it, that's when it first came to my mind to do that. I thought about it some, but before I ever talked to real estate people or anything, I had people start approaching me, and this was, I guess, when Ridgeville was starting to become a place on the map. I have been, over the last couple of years, I have been approached by probably close to a dozen developers. They all wanted to build this, build subdivisions over here, and I have had people that have, most of them wanted to build considerably more than what's being asked right now. I've had people talk about 1,500, 1,600 homes. My thoughts were, I felt like that was a pretty big development for being in a relatively rural area. However, it's no secret that Ridgeville is on the map now. It's going to be developed into a lot of things. We've already got some industry in the area. We know about the Walmart distribution center coming in there, and obviously that's why I've been approached by developers who wanted to purchase this property.
Mr. McClendon?
Yes, sir.
Just in the, because of a limited time and trying to be respectful of everyone, let me open this up for questions from the commissioners and see if they have any specific questions for you.
Certainly.
Okay. Um, Mr. McClendon, how many units are they looking to build here, do you know?
With this particular developer, I've heard different figures, but I think it's maybe four, five, six hundred, something like that.
Yes, a total of 450 acres, is that right?
That's right, roughly.
Close to that. Okay. Thank you.
And I felt like I was approached by, by this developer. I did some research or I had some research done for me. The reputation of this developer, as well as the fact that he was looking at a relatively smaller number of houses out there appealed to me. I will say that both for my grandfather's memory and my own interest in the property, I liked the idea of it not being such a huge development, although I was certainly aware that these kinds of developments are going to happen around Ridgeville. I'd be happy to go on, but I want, I want to answer any questions if there's specifics.
Any other questions from the commissioners? Well, thank you, sir.
Okay. If I may say one more thing?
Yes, sir.
I have met some of the community over there. I've always been very concerned about the welfare of the area. In years past, I have contributed land from this property for sewer pumping station. I've also given the county easements for building a paved road into the area. I care about the community. I've just recently met with some of the members of the community. I'm looking for this to be a win-win situation for all involved. I, I want the residents to be happy. I want the developers to be happy. I, I'm hoping that everybody concerned with this project will, will benefit from it.
No, thank you, sir. Appreciate that.
That is...
All right. Did the commissioners have any questions for the engineers?
I did.
Yes. The engineer representatives, please come forward for this.
Mr. Chair, a point of clarification while they're coming up. We are looking for a rezoning on this. We're not looking at a preliminary plat. Is that correct?
That is correct.
This is different than the last hearing we just had.
Correct.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Please state your name and address for the record, gentlemen.
My name is Jake Serrano. Address 104 Cicerocourt Goose Creek.
Corey Stellings, 111 Kansmell Land, Somerville.
Okay. Thank you. Go ahead, Commissioner.
One of the reasons why I made the motion to table this last month was my concern about infrastructure and, and the fact that this is a sizable development for a rural area, and some of the comments that came in were related to infrastructure. And at the time, when I looked at the, one of the plats that was put up by Mr. Robbins, I figured there were probably about 350 units in the design. And off the top of my head, when I did typical calculation like an engineer like me is going to do, I came up with about a million gallons a day of sanitary sewage being generated by that type of development because you'd be talking about single-family homes, about three people per unit, 100 gallons a person per day, typical design criteria that engineers use. And it didn't look like the infrastructure was there. Now, at 400 to 600 units, we're talking about a million two to a million eight. That's a significant capacity requirement for just the sewer capacity. I don't know where the infrastructure would be for water, and the roads don't look like they can accommodate 400 units, at least as they're currently designed. So my concern is not that this not be developed as a residential unit. Mine is more an issue of timing. Is the infrastructure available in a reasonable time period to be able to support a development of that, that size? And as an engineer, I say to myself, I can't see it. Within a five-year timeframe, maybe a 10-year timeframe, but I can't see it right now. And that's where I'm coming from. So, you know...
Wait, yeah.
Please...
I didn't want to interrupt you.
No, I just, if you could educate me, then, then, then maybe I can understand this a little bit better.
Yeah. Well, I didn't have the opportunity to look at this property now for over the past year and a half. There was a number of developers that were interested in the property. In fact, it was put in the contract by one client that I have and didn't, was really not a developer per se, but just looking for an opportunity to develop a piece of property. And the development was, that, that I was asked to do is to look at it, to make it as, as dense as, you know, as I could possibly make it. You're right, the infrastructure is not there. There's an existing pump station there that is only, from my discussion with Mr. Kaufman, is... is probably only has a capacity of 50 lots, right now is what he was guessing. It's there. It's only available for only a portion of our development, but for the rest of it, this developer that we're working with, we were advised or directed to look at engineered wastewater systems, which is now prevalent in the sign of subdivisions in the rural areas. It just has come about in the last 10 years with DEHAC. In the past, when some of these lots won't perk, they won't approve any permits. And now, whenever the conditions are not subject to a conventional system, they would deny it and ask an engineer to design a wastewater system. And there are products out there that I, for one, have used different products that apply to different situations. And we will be engaging a soil classifier that would analyze the soil condition and whatever is applicable from an engineered wastewater system, that's what we will apply to certain lots. So it could be, once we get there and have these soils report, we may have varying lot sizes, because soils can differ from class one to class four. And not knowing this at this time, all we're looking for is the classification of an R1, because right currently, it's Zone AOC and it could be developed. And we did look at that development, what they can do on absence of control, which is deferring to TRM, I believe, is the classification. And we have done a layout of it to do a comparison of what we're looking to do here. And this is all driven by the developer having experience in development. They want to provide buffers along the road, they want to provide buffers on the wetlands, along the roads that are being proposed internally in the subdivision. We're proposing a 20-foot buffer internally and the wetlands are being buffered 30 feet per the design, which is preferred by DEHAC. So all of that is to protect the environment and all of that will be implemented in the design. So that's our approach to the project. And on the water system, there are existing six-inch water lines on Indigo Road, which is the road that's running east-west or northeast-west, south, and then Cummins Chapel, there's also a six-inch line. All of this we have obtained from the Water and Sewer Authority. Jason's team was counted up to provide this information to us and we have provided some maps to show that. I think the developer is not looking to push this development on a fast-paced development. They're just looking to develop the areas that are close to the pump station first as Phase One and then when they have exhausted all that capacity, they would move on to the other areas that will require wastewater systems. So in terms of a development, I don't think it's going to happen that fast. I had been talking to Mr. Kaufman about what's being planned out there. I think they have considered a water tower, which is, I think, on the Bridlewood subdivision, which I think they bid it, but he can probably expand on that a little bit more. So I would see this developer addressing, if they get the R1 zoning, they would develop those areas that can be developed and then wait on the other infrastructures that are needed. Or if they want to develop, they need more water systems, because there are three water tanks out there, one in Ridgeville, one at Bridlewood, and there's one where the Indian tribes, I think, those are the three water towers that are out there that can supply water.
Yeah. You would need those for development that size, given that you only have the two six-inch lines.
Yeah.
You couldn't maintain pressure in that community.
Yeah. So any expansion that we would need to be able to serve this subdivision, we will provide.
What percentage of the real estate is wetland, roughly?
What would you say? I would say 30% probably, guessing.
30%?
Yeah, 30% of the...
The wetlands are depicted as that little kind of green area with little dots in there on your plans, kind of giving an idea of a visual. And just so you know, this exhibit was provided to the county by the engineer for this discussion.
Question.
Yes, sir.
The two different colors on here, the purple is with sewer service and the brown is third acre lot with septic service?
Yes, sir.
That's how you got it laid out?
Yeah.
Good job. And an engineered system can go on a third acre?
Yes, sir. We, yeah, we are looking, initially, we didn't have a whole lot of buffer. The approach now is a little bit on a semi-clustered development, that's why you see a lot of green space on it and that's what we're going to achieve. If we do, achieve the R1 zoning, we will work with staff to see what, if we can retain some of the vegetation, we will. We're going to, I think the developers have asked us to limit the development to 550. I think that's what we have here, right? And that's just to have a lot more green space on the development.
Commissioners, any other questions?
Again, this is a zoning request, this is not a preliminary plat and all this could change. You know, you could get more units or less units and all's going to have to be vetted through public works, no matter what they do, and through traffic studies, you know, all the things you have to do. Mark has to understand what they're doing and, you know, he would either say, no, that isn't going to work, or it is going to work, things like that, you know, as far as recommendations. So, I mean, this is a long way to go. I think this is, again, a zoning request. And I think I said last month, I think that this area is going to grow. It's a matter of whether somebody starts working on zoning out there now or waiting five years, but at the same time, the people that are coming to these businesses that are out there or getting constructed right now, like the Walmart distribution, Volvo's not that far away, you know, Pine Hill Acres Campus, schools out that way, there's growth, this is right on the edge of growth. So I think it's coming. And I think, you know, that's the long view I'm looking at and, again, these people have a long way to go. So the zoning, to me, is something that probably is going to happen. It's just that, that's where it is, that's where things are, you know? So unless you want people driving 10 miles or 15 miles to work, try to put them within, you know, three, four, or five miles from work, you know, so.
That's absolutely right. We can only develop so much with the current infrastructure.
Right.
And it's there, but it's very minimal. And even if we want to put in as much houses as we can, I mean, we have applied for the permit and they would have to vet that through the process. So we're even, once we get the rezoning, we're probably, you know, six months to a year on Phase One before we could break ground on it.
Okay. Any other questions for the engineers? All right, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
We've heard from the property owner.
I would request, we have a member of Water and Sewer here, he showed up tonight and I would request, if you all would allow him...
Please, absolutely.
...to answer any questions that you might have regarding our existing water and sewer systems out there and what kind of upgrades that system are and how that might go.
Okay, certainly.
Hello, I'm Jason Kaufman and Senior Water and Sewer Engineer with the Water and Sewer Department.
Thank you for being here, Jason. Any questions, gentlemen?
I'll start. Rich, you want to go ahead?
What is your timing with regard to increased capacity for, let's say, the pump station out there?
Well, right now, we don't have any plans to do improvements. The one thing we do have, that there is an elevated storage tank that's been designed, that's currently out for bid, that would be at the back of Bridlewood, that's something that's, it's something that we needed to do anyway. But that's, as of right now, that's the only infrastructure project that we have planned.
So there's no, there's no planning for Force Main or anything like that, or List Station?
That's typically when there is, if a development project requires some improvement, that there's, that's expected to be on the developer to do that improvement.
Okay.
Sometimes, like with that, with that plat that just went through, that we might work with the developer to upsize beyond what they need, that we're just to kind of look at the big picture, but that's, of course, that's not something we've, that's kind of early for...
Now, the engineers talked about engineered systems out there. What would typically be approved as far as an engineered system if they were to go that route?
Well, we only review the, since we maintain the county's water and sewer systems, we really only review to the extent that affects the systems. We would not, any kind of private systems, those would actually go through DEHAC.
So if I wanted, let's say I were developing it and I wanted to put in a packaged treatment plant for a million gallons a day, that wouldn't be your approval, it'd be just DEHAC?
Yes, well, I mean, now, if you did something like one system that would go through a sort of like a neighborhood, that's going to be a little more, a little more involved. I think that's something council governments would get involved, I don't really know the full process.
Yeah, they'd also have to find an area in which to discharge if they were going to go that route.
Yes. And that's a little more involved than just like an individual lot.
Yeah. How about on the potable water side? Any plans for that in the area?
Nothing planned at this time. I mean, I do expect that at whatever point that we were to replace the water lines, we probably would go higher, but that's not something we, I certainly don't see that in the next five years. It's not something that's on our capital project list.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Oh, go ahead, Mr. Kaufman. Mr. Kaufman, so we, as a commission, listened maybe a year and a half ago with the county council and some others about our infrastructure concerns in the county and, you know, we listened up real well. And after that, I think we had some R4 zonings changed around a good bit, you know, so to sort of protect ourselves. But this looks like a single-family request, so that would be a less stress on a water and sewer system than a multifamily as far as acreage and density. So my question would be is, do you know what our, is our capacity on the edge right now in Dorchester County for sewer? Are we, I mean, we've got some, we can sell some taps, I'm pretty sure, but are we, are we like, are we 80% full or are we 90% there? I mean, that's a big question, I know.
I'm not sure the percent off the top of my head, that is something we...
We have capacity.
You know, it is, I would say for the treatment plant, I'm not so much concerned, I don't know. At least locally in this area, in this specific area, one of the challenges is that, I mean, we have systems here that were designed for a rural community. This was from before anyone knew about Volvo, of course, and in particular with the sewer that's pumping up to the town of Ridgeville, which that was a system that was, again, designed 80 years, I mean, not 80, but decades ago, you know, for a small town. So it's, nobody was contemplating subdivisions in this area when it was designed.
Question I would have too would be, is if we, so we do have some capacity, but the whole entire system in that area is not designed for a lot of development, I think is what you're saying.
Yes.
Ultimately, we've got to face that as a county, I think, because that's on the edge of where the growth is going, this is just my opinion. And having said that, in order to, you know, to float a bond, to help improve sewer systems, you got to sell taps, I mean, I guess. So I mean, it's a revenue stream you got to get in order to help pay bonds. So I mean, it's a little bit of, things have to work together, I think. So I just wanted to make that comment, that it's not going to happen unless, you know, we kind of look at the whole picture, I guess. And that's all I wanted to say. If you have any comments, I would appreciate it.
The only thing, again, I'd say there is that this goes back to the, really for something to happen here, again, like I said, water at some point, I could see us upgrading and, but particularly for the sewer in this area, I would say that this would, some developer would ultimately have to take the brunt of that, of that first improvement. I just don't see this as being something that we, that we would do. It would be, if it made sense to do some kind of cost share, so again, we don't end up with several pump stations all in the same area or something like that, we might would look at, but then that would only be contributing only, to the extent, something beyond what the developer would end up having to do anyway.
Sorry for all the questions, but it does make me wonder, what does the Walmart distribution plant do? And they've got to have, possibly, that whole industrial park would have some big sewer requirements, I would think. So somebody's getting some sewer somewhere, I would guess.
There was some sewer that was built in the, within the industrial park.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir. Appreciate you. We have members from the public here that I think would like to speak for or against this rezoning request. If you just show by your hands how many folks would like to speak, we'll go ahead and process, all right? We'll start with the left side here. You, sir? Or I guess y'all are the right side if you're facing it.
It's your left.
Hello, everybody.
Just your name and address.
I'm sorry, Ed Wallace, 124 Marshside Drive, Somerville, South Carolina. And I have become friends with Mr. McLendon, you know, over a period of time. And just to maybe not overuse a phrase, but a win-win situation is, you know, what, he's just, if you knew him more, you'd know what, that's what he was shooting for. And there were multiple people wanting this property and I know that, you know, growth and something changing is not always embraced, but as far as Walmart coming in and other industries coming in, the people are coming in, whether, you know, those are, those are there. And to say, to think that, to not provide for that growth, I don't know, when you have it right there and you have somebody that's already vetted a bunch of really super-high-density developers and handpicked this particular developer to come in and, you know, with, he's conscientious and not asking to do anything more than what you already have. You know, if you only have 50 units and that's what you have, then it's on him, the responsible developer, to take care of the rest of that. And then beyond that, what Mr. McLendon didn't share was that not only has he reached out to other community members, you know, there, the Indian people, I don't, maybe that's a bad word to say, I don't know, but there are several tribes and the chief is here tonight and... But there are several tribes, and the chief is here tonight. And they've worked out a cooperative agreement, you know, to kind of, win-win, you know, that, that everybody wins in that community. Something's going to happen with it. It might not be, you, you guys have the power, ladies, to not do it. But to, to do it, it's, I don't know if you'll ever get a more cooperative, willing group to do the right thing than you have right here in front of you right now. And, and, and just, just check him out, you know, check Mr. McClendon out. He will pass everything you've, you've done. He's, some people would say he's difficult and long-winded. But I have to agree. But he is, he's a great guy. And it took a lo, this didn't just happen. It took a long time to get to this level. And the development is not going to just happen either. They know that. And, and I'll leave y'all alone now. And, but the, the chief, if he can follow me or sometime during the thing, you know, talk to you guys. And any questions?
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Thank you. You, sir? Name and address for the record.
Yes, sir. Eli Wallace, 124 Marshside Drive. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I think I'm more aligned with Commissioner Pratt and the belief that, you know, the growth is coming. And I don't have much to say, but what I will say is that, you know, I am a little bit biased, as my father is one of the real estate agents in the transaction. But the, the growth is coming. And like Commissioner Pratt mentioned earlier, we don't want to have, I don't think anyone wants to have people, you know, driving 15, 20 minutes every single day to get to work. And I understand there are concerns about the infrastructure. And I don't think, you know, as he said, that you could have a much better group to address those concerns. And they're going to work with you in every step of the way, as from what I've seen from them. So my general belief is just let this be the tip of the spear. And, you know, the, the growth is coming, so it needs to have this, in my opinion.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else on my left side that wants to speak on this rezoning request? Okay, we'll go to the, my right side. Go ahead, sir. Mr. Robbins, go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thought I was going to get a chance to get up here with.
Name and address for the record.
Robert Robbins, 814 North Cedar Street. I represent American Star, the developer that is interested in developing this property. And I spoke to y'all at the last meeting via Zoom, and, and I know that that didn't go like everybody wanted it to go. But we appreciate the chance to speak. I wish I could have gotten up here earlier today, because I think the, the conversation has kind of gotten off track a bit. I think Mr. Pratt has accurately focused on the issue. The issue right now is not the timing. The issue is which zoning classification is the best one to go forward with this property. Mr. McClendon can sell this property, and American Star can develop this property under absence of control, or they can develop it under R1. And R1 is a far superior zoning classification for this development. And, and that is an issue that I, that I really would like for y'all to focus on. If they go forward under absence of control, they cannot get as good a product as they can get with what you just observed. And, and we'll talk about the, the neighbors in just a second as well. And I think Chief Creel wants to address you as well. Is, Ms. Kaufman, is there any way we can get those slides back up?
Which, which one did you want, Mr. Davis? You want the colored one?
If we could pull the, if we could pull the slide back up that has the R1 zoning conceptual plan. These folks are in preliminary stages of, of this discussion, commissioners. And, you know, a lot of these issues that y'all have been hashing out here over the last few minutes are things that are going to be decided much further down the road. All we're trying to do right now is show you that if we're allowed to go forward with R1, what we intend to do. And, and I really think it's a great plan versus what would happen if they do it under absence of control.
That's the one you want, AC?
No, if you could, if you could go back to the colored map first, I'd like to show them that one and then come back to AC, if that's okay.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman and commissioners, we spent a good bit of time, since we talked to you on Zoom, speaking with the Etistone Natchez Cuso Tribe. And, and I can tell you that I'm embarrassed, as a lifelong resident of this county, that I didn't know the proper name of the tribe. But we knew that it was important, and we didn't have time, because of the timing of the application, we did not have time to talk to them before we talked to y'all on Zoom. And we heard what Commissioner Simuleski said at the last meeting. And we went and sat down with them and, and found out a little bit about what they do, and what their needs are. And, and what this plan does is it helps them and it helps us. And we protect them and we protect the property. But you'll see the green line around the perimeter of this development, and there is a 50-foot buffer that is existent around the entire perimeter that's not available under absence of control. And you will also see that the lights back up to the buffer. So they can't see this development from the other side. And that's important to them. They, they want that buffering that we're providing. You'll also see up there that there's only three entrances in this entire development where cars are coming in and coming out. And we've got that laid out specifically to help them and to help the transportation network. In addition to that, you spoke earlier about the wetlands. This layout protects the wetlands intact. The wetlands are not crossed by any development of, of houses or lots. And we also have in that middle section where you see the yellow, some amenities that will be available to the residents. So those are a few of the things that are, are very important with respect to this particular zoning plan. And they're not available in the other. We also have preserved green space in this plan by grouping them the way that we've grouped them. And if you would go to the absence of control plan for me, Mr. Davis, you'll see in this, those dark shaded black spaces are the lights that are on the road, and will have individual driveways. And you will also see how the wetlands are affected by this plan. There are no amenities. It is not laid out nearly as well. And, and that's what you're looking at if you try to do this under the current zoning. And it's, you know, absence of control was never designed to develop subdivisions. It was a designation that the county came up with years ago because they couldn't figure out what to do with the rural part of the county. And if we're going to develop land, we need to use the R1 designations. So I don't think the, the tribe likes the absence of control zoning. I think they like our plan. We have had communication with them about naming the subdivision after an Indian name. We've had communication with them about naming the streets with Indian names, just like they are across the road. And, and we've had great conversations, and we've pledged to work together, and we believe we can do that. But in order to make it work, that is where it's beneficial to everyone concerned, we need this zoning designation. Now, to go back to what Mr. Simuleski said, and his points are very valid, there are infrastructure concerns, but we've got to work through those as we develop the property. And until we address those, we can't develop the property. But one of the options for sewer is to do individualized engineered systems on, on each parcel of property. Those are approved by de-hack. There is absolutely nothing wrong with using that approach. And that is certainly going to have to be a cost-benefit analysis that's done by the developer as they go forward. We simply want the chance to do it. This property, as Mr. McClendon said years ago, was a dairy farm. Well, so was the property in Knightsville, where Greco sits right now. When I moved to Knightsville, there were cows out there. And, and so is the White Gables subdivision. Dairy farm, the tougher dairy farm. It's coming. And so I just received an email from John Trulock, the Economic Development Director for the county, touting his two business parks. And, Mr. Davis, I think we got that on here, too. If you could go to the first slide for me, we can show you on the map where everything is.
Oh, you want the proximity?
That aerial map, I think is the first one. Yes, sir. So I got an email from Mr. Trulock, and he's touting the Winding Woods Industrial Park in St. George, and the Pine Hill Industrial Park in the lower end of the county, near 61 and 17A. And in between is our property. So we're right in the middle of the two industrial parks that Mr. Trulock is advertising for the county. Those parks need workers. Those workers need somewhere to live. That place that they live, as Mr. Pratt accurately said, needs to be close in order to not create more congestion and to allow people to move freely in their vehicles. This property is ideally located for that. And it's ideally located for Walmart, Volvo, and Camp Hall. So I know that it's hard to wrap your arms around, and Bert and I both grew up in the upper end of the county, it's hard to wrap your arms around the fact that, that Ridgeville is on the map, as somebody said earlier. But it is. It's very much on the map. This is not the only tract that's being looked at right now. And so what we want to do, as Mr. McClendon said, is a very responsible development. If you look at that absence of control map that we provided, and compare it to the one that we would like to do, and again, this is all conceptual, we haven't gotten the wetlands delineation, these numbers could come down. But if you look at the two, there just is not a comparison. And, and I think this plan that they have under R1 is a good product that will be acceptable to the tribe. And at this time, I'd ask you, Mr. Chairman, to allow Chief John Creel to speak. And I'll sit down unless y'all have questions for me.
Since Mr. Robbins represents the developer, if anybody does have questions, we can have questions for him. Okay. Thank you, sir. Allow the chief to speak. Name and address for the record, please, sir.
Name is John Glenn Creel. I'm the chief of the Etistone Natchez Cuso Tribe of South Carolina. And I represent the Four Holes Indian Organization, Tribal Council Incorporated, which is a nonprofit for our tribe. And I just wanted to make, read over a statement that I'd written together with the tribal council. On behalf of the Etistone Natchez Cuso Tribe of South Carolina, we would like to first thank you all for allowing us to, to be here and for taking, taking our voice into consideration as we farther look into the progression of Dorchester County. Our tribe has always been, and will always be, a peacekeeping tribe, if you look at the history. Historically noted, we've, we've been known to be a peaceful tribe, including during colonial settlement days. If you look at the history, our tribe, along with a few other small tribes in the area, became like a safe zone or a buffer zone at Gruber Crossroad. And as a result of that, we were given some acreage over in St. George. So some of our tribal council, we, and myself, we have met with the developers on a couple occasions. We've met with the, the land seller, different people who are involved. And we do feel that this will be a mutualistic type of relationship in development. And again, our question and concern was the infrastructure. That was a lot of the issues that we had, and questions we had from the people of the tribe. So, but, but the thought and the thinking went along the lines of what I hear here tonight, is that it's going to improve our, our community, I think, the infrastructure that will come. Also, the resources that will be more available to our tribal members, and possibly jobs. So the jobs are there, but we just need better infrastructure. And I feel that this development would enhance that opportunity to improve our infrastructure. And so we're all for this mutualistic relationship in developing this area next to our community.
Thank you, sir. Would anyone else on my right side like to speak for or against the rezoning request? Okay. Commissioners? Let me, let me ask one more question. Ms. Fran, we received some correspondence regarding this previously?
Yes, sir, we did. Received correspondence. It's in the back of your packets. We will not be reading these correspondence, but they are here for the commissioners to read, and they will be added to public record with the minutes.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. All right, commissioners?
Well, I, you know, I spoke previously at the last meeting and this meeting that, you know, hopefully, we could work with what seems to be the preferred group to buy this property, and the R1 zoning does seem to be the better choice. So I'll make the motion that we approve the request.
Okay. Do we have a second? We have a motion. Do we have a second? Is it acceptable for the chair to second the motion by Roberts rules? So that we can have discussion?
I think you'd have to pass the gavel.
I'll second it so we can have a discussion. Commissioners, comments?
Reason I'm saying this is not such a bad plan is for all the reasons we've already heard. But I, I just truly believe that this is a rezoning request. It's not, it's not a plat that we're approving. This has got to go through public works. If the capacity's not there, it will not be approved. If the road is not able to handle any of the traffic, the road will have to be improved by the developer typically. You know, it all has to be done the right way, or it just is not going to get approved. This, again, is not a preliminary plat, it's a rezoning request. So I feel like it's the right thing to do. If you, if you can't see the growth coming, I, I mean, I don't know what to say.
Well, something I mentioned earlier, and I'll just say, you know, looking at the AC opportunity versus a clustered, well-put-together community with buffers, you know, if you want a product, an end product, that is high quality, I think the R1 designation with this group makes a lot of sense. I'm encouraged by the communication between the developer, the property owner, and the local residents who would be impacted. And it sounds like they have an opportunity to create something special in the community, which is, which is encouraging. That's the way, you know, as a Dorchester County boy growing up here, that's the way I would expect us to operate in our county. So that's why I seconded it. Other commissioners?
Question from Mark?
Yes, sir.
Apparently, it does not follow along with the comprehensive plan, or you would have requested approval for it?
Well, the comprehensive plan has many components to it. A lot of people that don't deal with them oftentimes just look at what's called the future land use map portion, which is kind of that designation. This one here in your staff reports falls under the low-density rural and traditional neighborhood. Considering the nature of this area and where it's at, staff felt that this would fall under that more low-density rural portion of it. Are there some areas that have that, that you might see where we would support R1 closer to different things? There could be. But when you add all of the components of the comprehensive plan on, that staff would feel that this would not comply with it.
How is this any different than the previous request, asking to go back to R4, being in the middle of, how is this not spot zoning? Explain that to me.
You're saying the previous. You're saying the previous request we had tonight on the agenda?
Yes.
Well, I didn't say anything. We didn't use the word for spot zoning on that. But so that, I mean, you could, I mean, could somebody call that this? When you have an area, and this kind of goes back to the whole thing, at some point in time in an area where an area is growing or redeveloping, the first rezonings do have to occur. And, you know, obviously, we're working towards the AC district currently. We have some items on the agenda and how we're addressing the AC district moving forward. But it's not to say that there might be some areas around the Ridgeville area that are going to be receiving development pressures, and they will. A lot of the things that people talked about regarding growth is coming, development pressures, all of that is real. It's just you have to take into consideration the nature of the area and the general geographic region that might be in within an area. And this particular parcel, this far out, where Ridgeville is kind of that main component, it's cumulative. You have to add it up. So, if you all were inclined to support an R1 rezoning here, and I don't disagree that if you were talking about development, the R1 district could produce you, if somebody was to utilize a cluster development, maybe some nicer land development standards. It's more about the county, if they were, if you all were inclined to support this rezoning, you were stating that you believe growth of this nature, not on this parcel, but all of those parcels around there. If another one comes along, regardless of who's developing it, you know, a lot of the people here seem like very good people. And as much as I would love to live in a world where we can, we'd make decisions based on the goodness of people, we have to look at it scientifically. So, we're looking at it holistically and scientifically. And so, you've got these parcels and all of these surrounding parcels. So, if another one comes along requesting R1 anywhere in this area that doesn't have the components that you all have put together here today, you would have to justify being able to support that one as well. And we are looking at Ridgeville and the areas around that. That's where a lot of our economic development is focused in. We're looking at capital improvement plans in that area. So, if you start looking at places that are further from those hubs and our main corridors, yeah, you refer to it as just a rezoning. But then, if you let, if you start allowing that, all of these people start requesting all of these meetings with staff. Well, we have limited staff resources. So, if we're handling and we're in those meetings all the time, that means we're not in the other meetings. That means we're not focusing on the areas that Mr. Coffin was talking about, where we are looking at our water and our sewer investments. That means now we're focusing them here. We're trying to figure that out. And staff time is a very valuable resource at the county as well as future funds for capital improvements. You know, we can talk about developers and their costs and their associations. But I can promise you, and working in as long as I've done this, it requires the county as a team member to do all those things. They are always asking for staff time about how to upgrade these, how to do these water and sewer. They would, you know, our Public Works Director would be dealing with constant meetings on future road upgrades. DOT would get involved. So, yep, there's a cost that might be associated to those that the developer would burden, but it also is staff time. If we are using staff time on these projects, that means they're being pulled off of other areas and other projects.
Mr. Judy, did that answer your question?
I hope so.
I certainly don't want to get into the management of staff resources from this level.
No, I'm just kind of going.
If you would, put this slide up for us. Because, you know, I mentioned this last time, and please slide down just a hair. There is a large parcel of R1 just down the road from the request.
Yeah, so that's Bridlewood. I think you're talking about Bridlewood. That was done right down here.
Is that a successful?
Well, they've, I mean, so, I mean, that's your else discussion. That was done some time ago. It developed out. As you can see, it's been sitting vacant for a while. They're looking to pick it back up. Oh, no, hold on.
Okay. Well, I'm just looking that it doesn't seem that we're so far away from R1 in this area, especially since Walmart has come since we did the comprehensive plan from my perspective. But that's just my thoughts.
Yep. So, those two roads that they do take access off of Givens and Carter, those are future road improvement, capital improvement roads that we are looking at to run water, sewer mains, as well as road improvements.
I agree that eventually, probably, it's what is going to be and probably what it should be. I don't know whether we are there yet or not. With infrastructure, road, Carter Road is small. If you don't have sewer, you don't have the cluster development, the land zones itself through dehick permits. And, you know, they might not get the 200 houses in there. So...
This is where, you know, when I look at that map where they had the brown lots, those are going to be the third-acre lots with engineered septic systems. An engineered septic system with a lot of the soils we have down here, which a lot of them are clay, that's going to be a real challenge trying to fit that on that lot. And, you know, sometimes with some of the soils here, you need a one-acre lot to be able to put a 2,500-square-foot house on it. So, I really struggle when I look at all that saying, you know, if I knew that we're a force main a mile away, I'd vote for this in a heartbeat. I just think it's, we're talking about, I know, I understand this, you know, absence-of-control stuff. But in absence of controls, they're not going to put 500 houses out there either. It's not going to happen. And, you know, I look at the wetlands there, and if we're going to put 300 septic tanks adjacent to wetlands, you know...
I agree with your thought process.
You know, I'm looking at this as an engineer.
But I also understand that we have several different steps where those decisions will be made. This is just to have those discussions.
I know. But I look at it conceptually, and I say, I like the product, and I like what's there, but it's a question for me of timing.
Understood. Understood.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Just to add a little bit of discussion, I do believe, just looking at these lot sizes, they look to be very similar, whether it's purple or brown. So, and I agree with Mr. Simuleski. I don't know that the engineered systems are really the best way to go. I know they're not. However, as long as it takes to do something, this gentleman said six to 12 months. I would salute you 100 times if you got something done in six to 12 months, particularly the environment we're in and, you know, everything you have to deal with and permitting process and just getting, just getting the supply line to work for you. So, I'm thinking this is, this is a few years out happening. It's the planning stage. And I got a feeling that this purple will be done first. And after the purple is done, I think, I would hope that our county would, and Mr. Coffin's group, would find a way to get some more utilities in that area for the good of everyone, however that, whatever that takes, whether it's a new sewer plant or whatever. And we will understand that the growth is now going to be in that Ridgeville area and that many, many years down the road, that brown would be developed as phases two and three with public sewer. It just makes common sense to me. But that seems to me how this will go. And you've got a developer, because if we come back in three or four years, what they're going to do is they're going to go for R1, and we're going to say, well, sure, because everyone's moving here. You know, we're here now. And they're not going to put 400 homes in there. They're going to put a lot more than that in here. This man decided to go with somebody that he's, that's given him a reasonable plan, he thinks, that is best for his property land that his parents owned. So, I think it's a good move.
Well, we have a motion and a second, and we're in discussion. Any further discussion?
Restate the motion, please.
Mr. Pratt?
Motion to approve the R1 zoning.
Yes, sir. Any other discussion? Okay, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed?
No.
Sign?
Aye.
All right. It is, motion fails, staff's recommendation. Oh, we need a new motion, yes. All right. Do we have another motion? That motion failed. Well, I can suggest a motion. You know, a lot of our discussion was centered around timing. Do we need to table this item? And give the applicant an opportunity to work on other things or withdraw?
Mr. Chair, I think, I think we voted. And so, I don't know where we go from there.
Need another motion?
You need another motion.
The understanding, do they, if they come back for R1, is it a one-year process? Is that what it is, Mark? Or can they come back in a month or two? Or one year? One year?
We had a motion and a second and a vote. I don't see how you can table it now.
Right. The right, motion failed. So, another commission member needs to make a motion and see how that motion goes.
Well, with all due respect to Mr. Pratt, attorney's present and the engineer's present, I appreciate all their concerns and the technical concerns about everything. But I think we're still looking at a basic thing here where the staff is tasked, and perhaps we are somewhat from that task, to look forward to the preserving the atmosphere and the culture of the area and not just, and it's true. Time's going to prove that people are going to flood in here. I mean, you open the floodgates, they're coming. Look, you can look all around us and see it going on. And I think that staff's recommendation to deny and maintain the access-of-control situation is correct. And so, I will make a motion that we deny.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I don't know what, I didn't follow.
He made a motion to deny their request.
I thought we just had that. It didn't pass.
There was a, there was a first, a motion. That motion failed. A new motion has been presented to deny the request. It's up for a second.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it for the, to allow us to bring it to a vote.
Okay. Any discussion? I guess we've all had our discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Now, we're in favor of denial, right?
Correct.
The motion, the motion, right. The motion on the table is to deny the request with the first and the second. So, if you believe this item should be denied, you would vote in favor of the motion.
Okay, all those in favor will go again, so it's clear. Those opposed? And Mr. Judy?
I'm taking off on this one because I don't understand what just happened.
Okay. I'll just, Mr. Judy, do you want to approve or deny the request?
I voted before.
That's right. In that vote, the motion failed to carry. So, we have another motion on the floor to deny the request from the applicant. The initial motion was to approve the rezoning request, and that failed.
Right.
So, now we're in a motion to deny.
Can we discuss?
Certainly. If we have, we can discuss.
So, if we deny it, he can't ever bring it back? Or when, how long till he can bring it back?
I believe it's one year. The same request can't come back from one year.
If we do not deny it, when can he bring it back? Because it's coming back.
Well, that means you're, I mean... What's the concern, maybe, so I can best help?
I'm not going to deny, I'm not going to vote to deny him to bring, not be able to bring it back with more information later.
So, do we have a motion and a second? We need to let that carry out through a vote. If that fails, can another motion go forward to table it?
I believe you've already tabled this item once. At that point in time, I would recommend that you have the applicant's request before you all, how they would like to proceed if they would want to continue furthering delaying the request.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor of denial. Okay? All those in favor of the motion for denial, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Aye. Okay, that motion fails. Would the applicant like to come forward and give us additional information? Is that what you're saying is the best way to go forward?
You tabled it once last month. That was your, that was what you had to do. So, you know, as of right now, if you can't come to, I'm not sure what Mr. Judy's concern is in regards to the approval or denial of the request regarding the timeframe. But if his concern is to not, is to deny it concerning that they won't be able to come back for a year, then I would recommend bringing back up the applicant or Mr. Robbins on his behalf as his attorney.
Okay. Would the applicant or a representative like to come back up for?
Yes, I would like more discussion on this. My request would be to table it again, if that's possible.
Say that again, sir.
I would like to request a table again.
Okay.
If we could come back with more information.
Or, we're not able to table it?
Yeah, I mean, basically, you would request to, to withdraw or defer the application on your behalf.
Do you want me to withdraw my request for approval?
Hmm, it failed.
Don't need to do that?
Already voted.
So, as of right now, the planning commission cannot come to an agreement on an emotion with four people here.
Does the planning commission go into a meeting?
They cannot. So, you've already tabled it once. So, you're going to want to have, I would recommend, have the app, if you're trying, if Mr. Judy's concern is that they would not be able to ask for the same rezoning for one year, if that's his main concern, then I would recommend to the applicant on his own behalf to request to defer or withdraw the request at this time and bring it back to you later.
Okay.
What does deferring mean?
You're, on your own behalf, you're requesting for them to not take action at this time and to allow it to come back to them when you're ready to bring it back to them.
Essentially, you're pulling your application back.
Yep.
Well, that's two different things. Withdrawn application means he has to start all over. He has to take peas again, right?
Yeah, I mean, yes. I mean, if you withdraw the application, this particular application would be withdrawn, and then you would be at a comeback.
Deferring means postponing until some later date.
Oh, good terminology.
Yep.
If we can defer, that's what we'd like to do.
Okay. Do we need to take action on that? If he defers, we are fine, correct? Or do we have?
Yeah, just for safety purposes, this would be a good one to have legal counsel at. But I would just maybe make a recommendation to, at the applicant's request, to defer the action item.
And would you like us to vote on that?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So, you want a motion on that?
I think you would, I think it would be good for you, at the applicant's request, to make a motion to defer the item and then take a vote.
Do we have a motion?
I move that the, at the applicant's request that we defer further action on this motion.
Thank you.
On this proposal.
Do we have a second? Second? All those, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. This will be deferred for a later date at applicant's request.
No, very much.
Thank you.
All right. Having no other old business, we'll move to new business. Pump Station 2A, East Edisto Utilities Special District Plan. Mr. Davis?
Yes, so here now, we're jumping back over to a development agreement that we have regarding Summers Corner. We have this one, which will be Pump Station 2A, and then right behind this is Pump Station 5A. Both of them are pump stations. They're just simply in different locations within the Summers Corner area. And essentially what this approval is, is it's a special district plan that allows us to locate the areas so we can strategically know based off of future development to get, again, this is a discussion, we are getting infrastructure first, then development second. And this is identifying where those future pump stations will go. This is not an infrastructure plan, it's just a, kind of view it as like a general where this will be, and then at a staff level, they will bring us infrastructure plans, and those will be reviewed and approved at an infrastructure level. But this is an item, this is, these, these community plans or special district plans, it's pretty much the only planning commission approvals that are done as a part of East Edisto. So both of these are the same exact type of thing, but let's, let's move on them individually.
Yeah, we're just setting aside the real estate.
Yes, and the real estate is done, and it's, it's been looked at to locate them to serve the community appropriately, and they've been reviewed by our water and sewer department, and they agree with these locations.
They're in the right place.
Yeah.
Okay, commissioners, any questions? Entertained a motion?
I'm assuming the staff is okay with it.
Yeah, so, oh yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, I just kind of got lost in that. Yeah, staff recommends approval.
Yep. And we, Mr. Simuleski, would you restate your motion?
I move to approve as submitted.
Okay, do we have a second?
Is, is that for both or just for the first one?
Let's do, let's do them one at a time since they're two separate items.
So, motion on Pump Station 2A was approved with a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Pump Station 5A, do we have a motion for Pump Station 5A?
Move to approve as submitted.
Okay, and second?
Second.
All right, motion and second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. The pump station property is secured. Modification of land development standards. Mr. Davis?
Yes, so I know probably this, I don't know, maybe five or six in the last year we've had, I feel like this has been the third one. But again, I'll, I'll explain what your all's role is in this. It's always good to get a reminder. So you all, as the planning commission, have the right to grant modifications to the subdivision and land development part of the zoning code. Well, it's not really a part of the zoning code, it's the subdivision and land development part. Within that, there's language that only allows a minor subdivision to be done one time off the parent parcel. So that's the same thing that we've had before. So we have received this plat here in front of you to create these tracks off of what you can see what was a parent parcel in the past. So since they've already utilized their one minor subdivision, you know, use of the code, staff is no longer allowed to approve a plat at a staff level if they want to come in and further cut from the parent parcel. So they're requesting a modification from that language regarding only allowing to do a minor subdivision one time, and you all have the right to grant a modification to that language if you think it's appropriate for using, for subdividing off of the parent parcel. So it doesn't change the plat, it doesn't change subdivision, it is simply a matter of process that staff no longer has the authority to prove at a staff level.
Questions, gentlemen?
Is there a reason? This is taken away from staff, I mean?
Just the way the code was written. The minor subdivision, the way the subdivision code was written, put a provision in there that only allowed minor subdivision to be utilized one time.
Okay.
Well, well before my time.
And so, there was something else that would come to us? Is that how that would work, or, I mean?
No, this is it. So you're, you're not, you're, this is the plat. You're, you're, you're allowing staff, if you grant the modification of the section of the code regarding that a minor subdivision can only be done once, that's what they're requesting relief from. They're requesting a modification from that language to allow another lot to be cut from that parent parcel or their general land.
So you're one and done?
They've already used their one and done, staff approved their one and done.
And you're out of, it's out of your hands now.
It's out of our hands now. We cannot do it. You all have the right to grant the modification to the language.
Do you have a recommendation?
Yeah, I recommend, staff has no problem with it, recommend approval, I mean, it's just straight up, you know, just-
Do we have a motion?
Yes. Motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion?
I, I'd like Mr. Judy, he's a surveyor, I mean, is this a little, is this overbearing, I guess?
Yes, don't get me started.
So again, it's not an issue-
The subdivision thing, it needs to be rewritten. This is just one of the-
Yeah, I mean-
Problems that we got in it, and we need to, it needs to be rewritten, so.
We, we need to let staff maybe give them, within, within reasonable limits, certain modifications.
Yeah, lots of times, lots of times you have certain things that, you know, you might have timeframes in between that you can come in, cut a piece off the parent parcel, you have to wait a little while, cut another piece, cut another piece. Because the, the reason lots of times they would do that is, and this is unfortunate, it's because, you know, good people get punished for people abusing the system, is people will do the process to avoid a major subdivision requirement. So they come in and piecemeal, 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 and then before you know it, you've got a major subdivision. And so, sometimes, sometime, you know, in the past, they, they wrote some language that was really strict, and, you know, I wouldn't disagree with Mr. Judy that, you know, it's pretty strict in that, you know, one and done at a staff level for just a simple plat like this.
Okay, any other discussion? All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. And, item D, discussion of cottage industry uses.
I'd like to say that Mr. Touchberry runs the longest meeting I've ever been involved with.
I want you all to know, I didn't have much to say. I look forward to Chairman Carter coming back.
You had two tough ones today.
I'm sorry, I missed, did we introduce the next item?
Discussion of cottage industry uses within-
Yeah, so Kira was prepared to do this, she had to run, so I'll, I'll do my best. But you all see in your staff reports, this is, so you know that we've been tasked with looking at the absence of control and figuring out how to better work that zoning district. And last month, we talked about removing the special exception uses, and the path forward would be that instead of it going to the BZA as a part of how the county currently operates, rezoning requests would be submitted, they would come to the planning commission, and they would then move on to county council. And that would just kind of be how the county changes, how like to say, how it functions its business of how developments or uses get approved versus kind of a one and done body, BZA. You got some more eyes and ears on it and an opportunity for some process with the community. Well, this month, as a part of that, what you'll see here is, is in the cottage industries, is that when you have these areas and when we're removing these special exceptions, and you have the ability to then come in and do some rezonings for where it makes sense, I think some of you talked about maybe some of the crossroads areas where commercial would make sense, you're still going to have this absence of control district, which, you know, will, will work on a name, might be called like an agricultural district. But what you like, what we would like to do is, is that within that agricultural district, so you're not getting bombarded with, let's say, a, a general commercial zoning district in the middle of nowhere, you will open up the opportunity for cottage industry. And you open up the ability for people to live on, you know, tracts of land and, you know, maybe run a business off of their home, not a large scale one. You know, I think a good example would be, is, I mean, my brother does this. He, um, he, he, he's a wood, he's a wood shop guy. And as a matter of fact, I grew up on a cottage industry in Maryland. And my mom's business was it, my brother worked for her, and I saw exactly what it was. It was five acres of land, and it was, it was a very unique and interesting thing that I got to see. But that is, and then he was, and it was wood shop. He had like little wood shop on the property, and they would make products. And I watched my mom build a very large empire and a business, very successful, good business from this. And so the idea is to allow within the ag, what, what, what will be a different zoning classification, but we refer to it currently as the absence of control, the ability for people to live on their land and also operate some smaller scale like type businesses just as a part of that zoning district. So that's what the cottage industry is. This is nothing you all are voting on tonight. This is just simply another for your information to kind of look at, look at the staff report. But I think though, that as you kind of go through, so then we will come to you with the actual text amendment to this. And that's when we'll have a lot more further discussion on it, but we want to get these things in front of you, let you all start thinking of it, so when that does come up, it's just not new information. So you can see some examples of some uses of what might have been considered cottage industry. This discussion did come up that, what appears to be back in 2012, I think the county kind of poked around at it, but I don't think it got very far. And during that time, you can see in Kira's staff report, it kind of looked at some general ideas that were discussed at that time. So what we've done is we've put those and given those to you now, and what we're trying to do is not trying to reinvent the wheel, but continue that discussion, jump off that conversation, and look at those things. And it's really just going to be the kind of look at it. So things you would look at, and, and, you know, we kind of put it at the end of the report, but as we're doing this, the best way to do it is, you know, ask yourself, if you live next to one of these, what would protections would you want? Because a lot of people move out to these areas for a peaceful, calm, rural way of life. And if you're trying to achieve that, and all you hear is metal getting cut all day long, that's not happening.
How about a fireworks stand?
I mean-
I know that's not what you're talking about.
No, that's, that's not. So no, we're, we're talking about the craftsmen. We're talking about the people who'd like to work and do those things. I'm talking about my brother, you know, I'm talking about those people.
Organic farmers.
What's that?
Organic farmer.
So Robert could open up a hemp processing facility.
Exactly.
Well, I don't know if that would be cottage industry.
Is it a requirement that they live on the land?
Yeah, typically, I mean, well, typically, yes. It's usually a primary, you live on the land, and you've got a workshop in the back, or whatever you're, whatever it is. You know, small scale, not very large, but what it opens up and allows is it allows, you know, if you're running that business, it allows you to have an employee come over and help out. It allows you to have people to come and, and look at your product. You know, let's say, give an example, somebody is an auto hobbyist, and they love old Corvettes.
Yeah.
And their thing is, they love getting Corvettes, they love taking them back in their shop, they like fixing them up, and they like selling them.
Not, not to be construed as an auto repair facility.
I'm just saying that, that, that could fall under, you're not trying to sell 50 cars, that's general commercial, that belongs on our main roads. But if you're a person who just wants to go out and live out there, get five, 10 acres of land, build a three-car bay, and work on some old Mustangs and Corvettes, and sell them in retirement, that's kind of stuff.
I mean, I think honestly speaking, that's already going on anyway.
Well, yeah, so we're just, I mean, as we're, as we're pulling back on these uses that are currently there, we're also trying to open them up for what makes sense. And then on the areas that are more intense, those would be the rezonings. And when it makes sense, they get evaluated, and staff and planning commission either recommend approve or deny them.
So this was food for thought for future
Yeah.
reference. Any other questions?
Good job.
The report of the chairman is that he is absent with leave that is approved, he is not AWOL. Report of the planning director, I'm assuming, is none?
Correct.
Any public comment?
Well, you guys have a mess to deal with with this rezoning because of the growth that's going on. We just cannot stop the rush that's going out to Ridgeville. Terrible amount of sympathy for these folks here wanting that R1 zoning. I see what they need, they want, and we're going to have to deal with it. It also occurred to me that even if you had approved that tonight, the R1, they still have so many hurdles to get through before they can actually get off the ground with just the first section that they have infrastructure for. And bottom line, for what they don't have infrastructure for, yeah, we, we have, you got, we have county council, you can turn it down. Just because they, just because they got a problem for R1 zoning, doesn't mean they get to do anything they want to do, Bill's going to town, he's going to want to do. You still have to go through the chain of the mayor, and you still have to get a little bit more planning.
Thank you, ma'am.
I'm going to just kind of add to that, if it's okay by the chairman.
Very brief add.
Brief add. You know, the county, for a while, I think back in 2012, tried to go out in this area and establish a zoning.
Please don't remind me.
Okay. So, these things just don't turn off like light switches, so, you know, there was opportunities for these large landowners and these people in Ridgeville to prepare for this day. And they've shot themselves in the foot. And the county has, had not had the opportunity to go out there and study and look at these so we can grow in a fiscally responsible way. Staff is simply suggesting these things need to occur first before we consider these huge decisions that have a major impact in the way these areas work, live, and most importantly, the cost of infrastructure. It is a fiscally responsible approach. And, you know, sometimes you get, these people, these large landowners haven't done much to help themselves to prepare for today. And maybe now, because of these things, that conversation, those things can start. Because I agree with Ms. Shepherd, growth is coming, but planning is planning for the growth. And we have not had adequate opportunity, because we've received some, and I, and I, Mr. Touchberry, chairman, I say this because some of our comments that were received is the county hasn't done anything. And I believe the county has tried to do some things, and I want to defend the county in that part. We have just met resistance. And a lot of these large tract owners out here have not played their role in helping us get them to a point for them to be able to sell their land to be developed. So I just want to say my piece in that.
I just want to make a point, because I don't think I explained myself really well. I'll tell you where I was at the tipping point. When the engineers told me they only had two six-inch potable water lines there, that was a killer for me, for right now. Because the reality is, unless they put wells in on that real estate, if they started building homes out there and people started taking showers between 6:00 and 8:00 a.m., we wouldn't have any water pressure.
And the county has no interest in running large water pipes out there at this time.
But then that comes back to, like, you can't get the progress they can't build. They have R1, but they can't build them.
Yeah.
So, I mean-
So I was saying to myself, I like the design, that wasn't the issue, it's just-
We, we have a huge infrastructure problem. I completely connect with that. I understand that. And that's why I say you guys have a heck of a mess to deal with because of that. And you can't, you know, you can't make it go away, just like Mark said.
I'm just a tough-ass engineer, that's all.
We, we have one more motion.
I'm, I'm going to make a motion when we adjourn.
Yes.
Do we have a second? All right, I think we've come to the end of the meeting, vote with-
Never figured this one out.
As the chairman would say.
And if you need a third, I'll do the third.
No, absolutely not.